Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 26, 2022 Tingsboro School Committee Meeting. Please be reminded that these meetings are audio and video recorded. My name is Becky Stanton and I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Good evening, Rob Mullin.
Good evening, Dustine Puma.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Julie Guastucci.
Ryan McMahon.
Anthony Tenerola.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
We'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the approval of meeting minutes, the April 12, 2022 School Committee Meeting Minutes, the April 12, 2022 Executive Session Minutes, the April 20, 2022 Executive Session Minutes, executive session minutes not to be released at this time. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries 6-0-0. Great. And it doesn't look like we have any citizens here. We can move on to correspondence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In front of you, you've received a letter from Principal Ogden regarding all the upcoming celebrations. I anticipate you'll be receiving an email from Principal Pollitt and Principal Kavanaugh at some point in the next couple of weeks to, again, encourage the school committee to be visible and participate in any of our post-end-of-the-year celebrations as you see fit. It's a great time to get things a little bit back to where we were and enhance and improve some of the experiences and celebrations for our kids. What didn't make correspondence was, I hope you saw it today on social media, I had the opportunity this morning to go to WCAP with Town Administrator Hanson and we were able to do about a 20-minute segment this morning talking about the middle school building project and addressing some of the questions and concerns of the community and really getting some more information out there. So that's available on social media as well now, and I will ask Derek Piper to make sure it's linked to our webpage as well.
Great, thanks. We have nothing for personnel, and Grace is not here this week. She's at the National Deca Conference, isn't that right?
She is, yes, she is.
Great, good for her. Good luck to her and her teammates. We don't have any subcommittee meeting updates, so we can move on to unfinished business. Dr. Flanagan.
We're flying through the agenda, so we'll go to the TMS Building Project, first slide. So as I said, we are on WCAP this morning, please look for that through social media, good information available for constituents. Tomorrow, tomorrow morning, we have a 10 o'clock Zoom with the MSBA where it will be officially approved, the schematic design. It is a pretty brief meeting, I believe, it'll be less than 10 minutes, but it's an opportunity for them to finalize and formalize a vote as the MSBA Board of Directors. Tomorrow night also, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we have TMS tours available. Anyone who wants to drop in and see the condition of the current middle school, as you look around the room now, you see several renderings that we received from J CJ Architecture. We have about 15 more of these renderings over in my office. These will all be set up in the middle school cafeteria tomorrow night for a gallery walk if people want to see what the potential new middle school will look like. This same thing will happen on Saturday morning between 9:00 and 11:00. Drop in at the middle school, tour the school, ask your questions, talk to the kids about the conditions, and again, if you want to see the gallery walk, you can do that as well on Saturday. I anticipate that we will also keep the school open on Tuesday night, beginning at 5:00 o'clock, with some of the renderings here and the rest of the renderings down this hallway here at Tingsboro High School, so people can get a sense of what the potential new school will look like as they walk into town meetings. So it's hard to believe that May 3rd is a week away. I feel like we've been talking about May 3rd for two years. So we're at that point, it's exciting to get here. Again, we need people to come out and vote, we need a 2/3 majority on May 3rd, and of course, that would put it on a dead exclusion question on the ballot for May 17th, which we would need a simple majority. What we've done tonight, in terms of the FAQs, is Dr. Branko and Mr. Pollitt spent some time really talking about the instructional and educational impact of the current facility on our students and our kids and what a new school could provide us. I know there's a lot of information on this slide, and I think, I think Mark said Cardinal Center Number One is breaking the PowerPoint rule, putting too much information up there. But we are putting it up here so people can reference it through this video if a lot of people are watching the school committee meeting, but the information is available. So Mark is going to hit some highlights on the next two slides, talking about the benefits, instructionally and educationally speaking, of a new middle school.
So the biggest change instructionally that we've talked about ad nauseam a lot in the past couple of years, over the past 10 to 15 years, this focus on interdisciplinary differentiated hands-on experiential learning. Kids are not sitting in rows. We've been hearing from the American workforce that kids cannot problem solve, they cannot be creative, they cannot collaborate at the quick pace and the ability level that other companies are looking for in our youth. So that has slowly been tried to be addressed in the classroom as far as project-based learning and interactive hands-on opportunities. So the new building will really address that need for flexible space. Our current classroom configurations don't meet that goal at all right now, so this will allow us to use a wide variety of methodologies. It'll also address the grade level and Unified Arts Neighborhoods. Right now, if you come into the middle school, you'll see that we do have kind of a 6th grade, 7th grade, and 8th grade hallway, but our Unified Arts are all over the place. So based on where we can place them and based on reconfiguring classrooms like the STEM Room, which was never designed to be a STEM Room. So by building a building that's purposely designed around this neighborhood and interdisciplinary concept, we'll be able to have some cross-pollination to subject areas with teachers building some really robust learning opportunities for kids. Another real big one around is the STEM-based, the Computer Science Class, the Media Studies, the Visual Arts. Those are all courses that are coming out of DESI. We talked a couple of years ago about the Computer Science for All Initiative, so now we have Computer Science Programming across the entire school district. So our teachers at this school are already talking about interdisciplinary work between Visual Arts, Computer Science, and STEM. We see some evidence of that, but those collaborative spaces aren't set up well. They're in different parts of the school, they're not, they don't have open glass opportunities in places where we can have good visual opportunities for kids to collaborate together. Finally, the science, on this slide, the science classrooms are not really science labs. They were, they've been repurposed, rebuilt, moved around for years in that middle school. This will be the first time, if we get this building built, that there will be two real science labs of equitable size and opportunity at every grade level, which would be a big win for the Science Department. On the second slide, we talked a lot about Computer Science and Media Arts already. The STEM class, Mr. Bellrose has talked about this in a couple of public meetings, the STEM class was never designed for that type of programming. This will have a real STEM learning environment, it will have flexible workspaces, modern tools and technologies, and real potential for diversified instructional practices. Right now, he's doing everything from hallways to sidewalks to going outdoors. You know, we don't have great ventilation in there, so he has to, he has to kind of modify a lot of lessons and equipment that he teaches with for safety reasons. So that will be a big upgrade for our STEM department. Our program will get a kiln, which is recommended in our 6-8 framework, so we currently don't have the kiln or the ability to actually put one into this school. Bandroom and the flexible performance space will really give us some opportunity to provide a wider offering of fine performing arts that we'd like to talk about expanding over time. This anytime, anywhere access to technology, I think Mr. Piper and his staff have done an unbelievable job getting us to where we are in all of these schools, but just to build a modern facility that's really, really set up appropriately to take us forward in the 21st century is going to be an important, important feature. Don't want to skip the gym, so we know that the new gymnasium will be a modern gymnasium, increased perimeter space around it, a nice 325-seat bleacher setup. And it will not just support the during the school activities and after-school programming, but it will serve for town recreational purposes and be a real showcase opportunity for a community that has a lot of youth and adult athletic opportunities. So we think adding a brand-new, updated gym is really a good feature for the community as well as the school. And ultimately, we have a lot of related services that we offer our students who have a variety of needs, OT, PT, ELL, speech and language, reading counseling, psychology. Those spaces are kind of shoehorned into the current middle school right now, and a purposefully designed school will allow us to have the appropriate space for those students' needs to be met. Really excited that the date is right around the corner, and we encourage people to call, ask, email, anybody that can that's involved in the building project to help us out, but hopefully these will help with some high-level questions and we get these out there as soon as we can after tonight's meeting.
Thank you, that was great. Any questions about the middle school project or anything that anybody wants to add? Okay. Moving on to 8B, which is the second read of Sections J, K, and L of the Model MASC Policy. Dr. Flanagan, did you get any questions?
I did not.
Okay, great. So I will seek a motion to approve as a second read Sections J, K, and L of the Model MASC Policy Manual.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries 6-0-0. Thank you. New business, TPS SEL Support Structure.
Great, thank you for the opportunity to talk about this. This is certainly on the forefront of our minds, the social-emotional needs of our students moving forward. We're hearing it, it's no secret, it's on national, drawn national attention, but the social-emotional needs of kids right now is paramount. We're doing everything we can to make sure that we have all the necessary supports available for them. I think one of the things that we look at every year when we begin to schedule is we look at where the student needs are, what the student requests are, and we build a budget in February, March, and then in March and April, the kids develop their schedules and we see where we land. This has afforded us the opportunity to restructure one position that we had in the budget and really look at it differently. So basically, next year, what we're going to do is we are going to add a social worker on this campus, serving middle school and high school students to really support, kind of wraparound services, reentry to and from hospitalization, reentry from school phobia, any other needs a student would potentially have. We feel like by adding that social worker position on this campus, we feel that we are in a very good position to support the social-emotional needs of our kids going forward. As you know, we've budgeted to go back to three full-time counselors at TES. We tried to hire a counselor last year, it was in our budget all year, we couldn't find any qualified candidates. Fortunately, we received, we had several applicants within the past month, and we hired an outstanding candidate, Cassie Tyros, who will serve in that role for us at TES. The other thing that we built in your budget, if you recall, we built in $15,000 for BCBA PD services. We're going to take that money and repurpose that money and contract service with a BCBA provider for students on this campus, board-certified behavior analysts. So to support kids who are dysregulated during the day on this campus, that will enable us to have our full-time district BCBA, Melanie Shannon-Ay, go full-time to TES and provide support there. So we're really beefing up support at TES. Additionally, if you recall, the last meeting, the last meeting and the meeting before, we received notification that our school psychologist, Cheryl Berman, from the middle school is going to retire. We are going to hire her replacement at the beginning of the school year, so we'll have a little bit of additional psychologist support on this campus. And again, we'll assess what the kids' needs are come September and October, and we will redeploy people if necessary. But we feel as though adding a social worker on this campus, contracting services for BCBA on this campus, and really increasing our social-emotional support at TES, we feel like this really positions us to take care of our kids next year and beyond. It's certainly something that is at the forefront of our mind and our thinking, and we need to do everything we can to make sure they can be as successful as possible. We believe this is the model that's going to do that. So I wanted to provide the information to the committee, and I wanted to get the information out there publicly that this is something that we take very seriously, and we appreciate the input. We've actually received input from community members saying this is a position that we need, we advocate for, that we should have, and we're trying to be responsive to that need as well. So we're excited about where we are, and we think we're in a very good spot going into next year. So this is just information I wanted to share, and I'm happy to answer any questions about it. I will say this, that next September, Sarah Lewenzic will be back here with Josh Evans and Brian Riley to talk about SEL, what we're doing, and really give you an in-depth look at what our numbers are, what our program is, and show you that we are doing everything we can. So that'll be in the fall.
Great. Thank you for that. Moving on to 9B, the ELA math curriculum update.
It's been a busy four months in the Curriculum Department. I had given you an update a while back that we were fortunate to have applied for and been gifted a grant from DESI to the tune of almost $200,000. I'm really happy to tell you that the Curriculum Review and Adoption Committee has done tons and tons of heavy lifting on this, so a big thank you to Assistant Principal Erin Souza, who co-chaired and really took a big portion of the lead the second half of this semester for us, as well as all the teachers and content leaders who have been involved in that work. So we reviewed seven programs, selected three for a final review, brought them back for a second interview, so to speak, took a deep dive with the vendors on those three. Then we went back to every grade level team at TES, and they did a thorough review at every grade level and reported back to their findings. And the final review session, the team selected Into Reading, which is a Houghton Mifflin product, as the new K-5 literacy curriculum. So now we had to work with HMH, I did that over vacation last week to secure a quote, and this morning I actually submitted the quote to DESI for final approval, and they will be going back and forth with me through email the next couple of days to lock up that quote and theoretically get the funding sent as soon as possible to HMH. And if you recall, there was an accelerated timeline because the money needs to be spent by June 30th. So fast and furious, but really proud of the work that the teachers and the staff have done on this, and it should really bring us to a new place as far as literacy development goes at the elementary school. 6-8 math has also been really busy with our consultant from Leslie University, Dr. Hillary Kreisenberg, who spent three years with us, if you recall, at TES, overhauling our math programming and instructional practices there. She's in Year 1 at the middle school currently. We're going to do a second year next year, but right now, we're moving to a review and adoption of illustrative mathematics, which is a much more hands-on manipulative approach to doing math and not being passive in the math classroom. It's very similar to what we just adopted with the San Francisco Math Program down at the elementary level. So this was sort of the plan all along, was to change our practices and materials down at the elementary level first and sort of have a trickle-up. So they're in the middle of that PD with Hillary and her colleague from Leslie University. They'll come back the second year and do that a little more in-depth next year. We will continue with unleveled mathematics. If you recall, we unleveled mathematics last year because of COVID. We found it was difficult to really assess where kids were, we're still finding that, and all of the research is saying you should delay acceleration in mathematics as long as possible. So we're going off that national research that Leslie University has applied with us and gone over with us and the teachers, so we're going to delay that. We're going to have unleveled math for another year, 6 to 8, and the long-term plan is to then have Leslie work with the math department at the high school to create an updated high school pathway, so that all students will still be able to get to AP Calculus if that's the desire and the path that they choose. So now that Katie Rich is back with us, we will be working with the math department at the high school for the next couple of weeks, restructuring our alignment for high school students in mathematics, and we believe it's going to give a lot more kids opportunities. We've learned that kids peak at different age brackets, and to tell a child, you know, 5th or 6th grade, that they're just, you know, not in the upper percentage of their peers in a certain subject area has really hurting kids mathematically from a self-esteem standpoint and developmental standpoint. So we're proud of unleveling, we're proud of the work we're going to do with Leslie and the math department, and it will continue to have a high-end pathway to our upper-level math program for our seniors. So there'll be more to come. Mr. Woodlock, he's, I want to share that, he's on board with all of this work, so I felt like you were going to jump in there.
I was going to say, kudos to you because you've done a great job of keeping Mr. Woodlock in the loop on all this, so it's a seamless transition.
Yeah, he and I have texted, emailed, he's been in the district at least two times. I think he's coming back in again soon. So he and I have been in constant communication around all of this, so that he, we wouldn't do anything that he didn't support or wasn't prepared to lead. So he's been on board with the ELA, he understands the math initiative as a high school principal, he understands the importance of the pathways at the high school too, so that's going to be good work that he'll be able to take over.
As far as the ELA curriculum, I know that it's been fast-tracked because of this grant.
Yeah.
How do you plan to, is it going to require like a fast-track implementation and training with the teachers?
Yes, thank you. So part of the grant is actually to cover the professional development. So we have one full day of PD that's going to be scheduled. That's an implementation PD session. That also has to happen because of the grant before June 30th. So we're going to find a way to free up all teachers, it'll be interesting to do it, but we're going to do it, free up the entire faculty that touches ELA, which is basically everybody down there, get a full dose of implementation, how to use the product, how to unpack the digital access, what the hard copy materials look like. Then we're going to do a train-the-trainer with our content leaders or a rep from each grade level over the summer. So we're going to solicit volunteers from the grade levels, we're going to do a train-the-trainer with more PD. Then when we come back, we'll be doing train-the-trainer in September and October, and at that point, we have a contract with Keys to Literacy, that's the other company that we're working with, and Keys to Literacy will then pick up the instructional practices piece. And we've already told Keys to Literacy where our adoption is going, so they're going to start to do their homework on the Into Reading program to make sure that they can blend the instructional practices with the implementation of new materials.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question about the math.
Yep.
So does that mean that the math classes that are currently being held in the high school are going to change?
Not next year, but down, yes, ultimately, there'll be a recreation of the pathway, yeah.
So there'll be different course offerings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I can't tell you what they are yet, but yes.
Obviously.
But yes, the answer is yes.
But the ultimate goal, obviously, is to still be able to have the kids able to take the AP Calculus in their senior year?
Or when, yeah, or junior year.
Or junior, if they're really.
It won't, it actually won't, what it will do is we'll open up that pathway to more students ultimately.
Okay, right.
That's what the data is showing.
Because if you didn't get into honors math as an 8th grader, you basically were already trapped to the fact that it was going to be very difficult for you to transition as a high schooler to get to that path to being able to take AP Calculus.
Correct. So the hope is this will open up more pathways for more kids.
Okay.
So what happens to those truly advanced learners in math?
There's, when they cross in, so 6th, 7th, and 8th grade math currently, if you look at the math frameworks, has algebraic and geometric concepts in them already. So you teach to the standards in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade with those kids that are showing higher aptitude, going deeper and wider, so you're going to differentiate, and part of that is going to come with the universal design for learning work that Mr. Woodlock is going to bring to the district. And so a lot of that is around instructional practicing, practices in depth and breadth for that group of kids. Then when they hit freshmen, they will still be able to have the honors and the college prep levels, freshman and sophomore year, and then junior year, I can't predict it yet, but I've seen model drafting, that there'll be a clear split at the junior level. So for the kids like me who say, well, I'm not going to major in math, that's the track I'm going to take. If I'm a science math lean, that's the track I'm going to take. So what you're doing is you're just, you're delaying that acceleration to let more kids expand their abilities. And honestly, a lot of the research talks about how the kids at 12, 13, 14 years old, they have no idea what they want to major in or study or where their aptitude lies. They just haven't developed enough of that knowledge base about themselves as learners. So by the time they hit that beginning of junior year, most kids could at least give you some semblance of information of what their strengths and weaknesses are, what their likes and dislikes are, that the research is showing us, so that seems to be a good year for that to happen.
So along those lines, talking about, you know, transitioning from sort of middle school into high school, I know historically we've had sort of continuity issues going from the elementary school to the middle school. How do these new curriculums line up as far as where 5th grade ends and 6th grade picks up?
Yeah. So the math program is going to pick up seamlessly right now, that's why we're making the shift to illustrative, because not only do the instructional practices align, but the way they align to the current frameworks makes more sense. So it's the right time, we're actually bailing out a year early at the middle school for that reason, where we've sort of accelerated the adoption process to make that happen because we feel like the teachers are ready for that move, and we don't want to have another group of kids coming from a new and improved math experience to, you know, what we believe can be improved here. And it's really not, it's not an issue with the teachers, it's an issue with the instructional methodologies that we've been fostering and with the programming holding us back. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that's going to, that's going to do it. From an ELA standpoint, Keys to Literacy in our first year, next year with them, that's a K-6 PD for the whole first year. And they purposely have assigned the 6th grade teachers to the same PD as the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade teachers for that continuity reason. And then in Year 2, fast-forwarding one year ahead, we pull 7th grade to 9th grade in. So they're pretty structured purposely for that reason.
And actually, to that point, Ryan, glad you brought that up. I mean, I haven't done a full dive into the SDI survey results yet that I'm seeing from parents, but there are some general themes about transition from 5th grade to 6th grade, so we need to really think about that as a district and what we can do to improve that. It seems like early information talks about, what I'm seeing is that a jump to middle school seems to be a lot for our elementary school 5th graders. So how do we, how do we seem to work with that? So I'll be working with Mrs. Kavanaugh, Mr. Pollitt, to really talk about that transition. I feel like when we first got in, we've done our original SDI and entry plan, we talked about transition then, and it was always the 5th to 6th grade transition. It's been a problem, it's been an issue, it's something that will not go unaddressed going forward. We need to fix this problem, so we're going to have some real hard conversations over the next couple of weeks to figure out what it looks like.
Excellent, thank you.
I have some more questions. So right now, we're going to implement Into Reading, Into Reading and Keys to Literacy? They're going to be doing a...
Keys to Literacy is actually a PD consultant, that's not a program.
Okay.
They're a PD provider.
So that's the difference, okay.
Yeah.
And then I guess my other question, I don't know if this really is applicable or not, or if it will be with the next Assistant Superintendent. When I was on the school council, they had talked about potentially changing the schedule of the high school because the 5-5-5 trimesters really limits the kids and how many APs they can take. And in my experience, a lot of kids can take multiple APs and then therefore basically do away with their first year in college and only do three years of college. And right now, our schedule does not allow for them to be able to do that because they're pigeonholed in how many APs they can take. With the changing in the math program, is there going to be any reevaluation of changing the schedule at the high school?
Do you want to speak to the superintendent?
Sure, yeah. So they have begun work, they did a lot of work prior to the pandemic hitting, and then the pandemic hit, so it kind of put everything on pause. I think with Mr. Woodlock's assistant next year, certainly as a high school scheduling expert, he'll be able to work with the high school team to really reinvigorate that protocol and that process, really look at revamping the high school schedule. So I envision the high school team coming back before this committee, probably in January, February, saying this is, this is the model we want to adopt moving forward. I mean, the trimester schedule was something, actually, I implemented as a high school principal in 2010. Maybe it's run its course, and we need to do things differently. That was, that was a different time and era then, that satisfied our needs at that point, but I'm not adverse at all to looking at a different model. I think one of the things we certainly need to talk about is, you know, what is it like in terms of inserting some kind of advisory into that schedule on a regular basis, more regular basis than we have now? But you can't just insert an advisory unless there's buy-in from the staff, so you need to make sure that's done thoughtfully and in the right way. The middle school has had different iterations of their schedule the past couple of years. I would envision also having a conversation with Mrs. Kavanaugh about what the elementary schedule could potentially look like, and how do we really step back and assess what are we doing down there at the elementary school in terms of our staffing patterns and whatnot? So I think all of this change, now is the time to capitalize on this. I think the high school process is going to take a lot longer than an elementary school schedule shift, but yeah, it's absolutely being talked about at this, at this point.
Because it's also going to be a staffing issue.
It is.
Because you're going to have to transition to having, it's not a try anymore, and you're going to have to have more preps and so forth.
Yeah, and we'll have to bargain.
You will be.
Rob, did you have something? No. All right.
So speaking about the elementary school.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, one of the things we talked about, one of the things that was expressed to the administration down there from some of the staff was, as the day gets on, I think our kids are more alert and are more aware earlier in the day, so anything we could do to capture and maybe adjust the start time, you know, I think ideally, the elementary school would have loved to have moved up the start time by 30 to 45 minutes. It's just absolutely not feasible with our current busing system and our current busing tiers. As such, we work with DBUS to say, you know, if we were speculating about moving the elementary start time up, what's the best we could do? And really, the best we could do is just move it up by 10 minutes. So that poses the question, is it even worth moving it up? And we believe it is. We believe it is worth moving it up because what we're seeing right now is, you know, We believe it is worth moving it up, because what we're seeing right now is, you know, the later the day goes, the more, the more, I won't say disengaged, but the harder it is for our kids to focus. So as such, any minutes we can grab that will impact instructional time and student awareness, we absolutely want to capture. We did survey the elementary school staff about this, and 53 out of 68 members are fully in support of adjusting the start time by 10 minutes, and moving it up 10 minutes. The other thing that we know, anecdotally speaking, is that the parents, there are a lot of parents at the elementary school who wait at the bus stop with the car running for the kids to get off the bus, so they can immediately drive them to soccer, or hockey, or baseball, or dance. Just providing that additional 10 minutes to allow a student to get in the house, get a snack, change their clothes, and have some kind of transition, we think is probably beneficial as well. So, um, so what I'm asking is, is, I've already had a conversation with the union leadership about this. It is a contractual issue, but I would ask that the, the school committee approve or authorize me to sign an MOA with the TTA to adjust the start time of our school year by 10 minutes. So we'd move the start time up, 8:30 bus drop-off, 8:40 school start, 2:56 school end, as opposed to 3:06 right now. So adjust it by 10 minutes on both ends.
So I'll seek a motion to approve a 10-minute earlier adjustment to the start time at TES and authorize Dr. Flanagan to enter into an MOA with the TTA.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries 600.
And I think the parents that pull in at 7:45, they drop their kid off at 8:30, they'll be happy.
Yes.
And there's a lot of them.
All right, moving on to 9D, the superintendent evaluation. So we did, you know, as we do on an annual basis, the school committee, all seven members, performed an evaluation on Dr. Flanagan according to the goals that were set during the year. And, you know, these are living and breathing goals that kind of evolve as the year goes on. Dr. Flanagan, you did an outstanding job, thank you for another tremendous year. So from a goal number one, the leadership of the Tinsborough Public Schools through the pandemic, Dr. Flanagan earned exemplary. Goal number two, the recommendation of the strategy for district improvement, Dr. Flanagan earned proficient. Goal number three, revise and update the Tinsborough School Committee policy and procedures, Dr. Flanagan earned exemplary. Goal number four, leading the TMS school building project, Dr. Flanagan earned exemplary. Just to be clear, exemplary is as high as it could go. I think some of these, we may have gotten higher if we could have. Overall, the summative performance was exemplary, so congratulations, Dr. Flanagan, and thank you. This is a lot of work, and it's sincerely appreciated.
Thank you.
So I will seek a motion to approve the superintendent's evaluation as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to, sorry, I just wanted to thank Dr. Flanagan. I know I've said it before, but there's so much work that you do behind the scenes that, you know, not even all of us are aware of. I think our students are lucky to have you, I think the town's lucky to have you. And, you know, I'm very proud to be part of rating you exemplary, so thank you for another great year.
Appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries 600.
Can I make a comment now?
Absolutely, yes, sorry.
So, um, thank you for the kind words. Those kind words that, that you share towards me aren't towards me, it's towards the entire Tinsborough Public School system. We have an unbelievable central office leadership team that is as good as you're going to find around. Our principals and administrators in the school building do an outstanding job of leading the schools. Our teachers, our paraprofessionals, cafeteria workers, custodians, maintenance, we have unbelievable people, top to bottom, unbelievable people. So I thank you for this, but this is a reflection of them. That being said, none of this happens without the collegiality between the committee and the superintendent. We all have to be on the same page, and I thank you all for your support this year. I thank you for being open, I thank you for being honest. And we've had some hard conversations over the past couple of years. It's been difficult, but my success is your success, your success is my success. So we're all in this together, so thank you very much for all your support, I really truly appreciate it. That's it.
All right, Mr. Messina, we're moving on to finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your warrant for
One more slide.
I'm sorry, I, I, do I always skip your last slide?
Yes.
I do, I'm sorry.
I'll wait.
Just want to remind people, there's a pretty, pretty big meeting next week, May 3rd, town meeting. Please get out to vote, bring some friends. Town election, May 17th, regular school committee, which should begin at 6 o'clock on May 24th. That will also be Grace's last meeting, and we'll meet our new student representative that night, Nate Marino, who will be the student representative for the 2223 school year. And then we have our June 21st work session with Paul Ash. That'll be a 6 to 9 p.m. meeting. May 24th will also be the reorg meeting after the election on May 17th. So now, Mr. Messina.
Will the meeting with Mr. Ash be live or Zoom?
It'll be a work session. It'll be a work session.
No, it
It's a fair point.
It, it will be, it will be here?
It will be here.
Okay.
Yeah, it will be a work session, it won't be televised.
No, no, okay.
It's a three, it's a three-hour work session.
Okay.
Fair question.
That's, that's all, thank you.
I thought you were going somewhere else with that.
No, not at all.
Third time's the charm.
I saw yours, Mr. Messina.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. For signing of bills tonight, there were six warrants presented to the committee. The list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in your drive, I do have them all back. For signing of payroll, nothing tonight, we will catch up with that at your next meeting. And also in your drive is the March 2022 financial package, and that is your school committee budget still presented in two reports, one for salaries, one for expenses, as we continue to, to convert over to the new accounting system at Town Hall. Also in your drive is the balances on your revolving accounts, as well as the student activity accounts for the end of March. And the April 1st enrollment, I will leave to the chair.
Thank you. At TES, we had 819 students. At TMS, we had 391 students. At THS, we had 425 students. We had 24 out-of-district students, for a total of 1,659 students. Moving on to school committee discussion, before we go around for our school committee discussion, I'd like to start by recognizing Julie. Tonight is her last meeting with us after six years, two terms. And being vice chair this year, I appreciate all the support and the help. I think you and I have had a lot of back-and-forth communications, text messages, and phone calls. I really appreciate you, I appreciate everything that you've done for the committee and for the students of our town. We'll miss you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Julie, just want to piggyback on that as well. 2016 to 2022, six years, six years, wow, it's a lot of, a lot of nights out. And you got paid really well for it too, I know, right? 2016 to 2020 was pretty smooth sailing, and then, and then the pandemic hit. And you lived through two of the roughest years I think any school committee's probably ever had. So I thank you for your leadership throughout that time. I was thinking about, you know, Julie's input and, and her impact on, on this district over the past six years. You were constantly serving on the policy subcommittee, you were constantly on the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. You were an advocate, a staunch advocate for increased rigor at Tinsborough High School, and you made that known. You were probably the biggest supporter and cheerleader for free, full-day kindergarten. That's now a reality in this district. You, you've always spoken your mind, you've always held your position, but you've always realized that you were one of seven, and supported the entire committee regardless of what the decision was. So thank you so much for your time, thank you for your effort, thank you for everything you've given to the kids and the community. You will be missed, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have a little something for you.
Thank you.
Tony Fischko himself.
Awesome, Tony, you did a great job.
Just a nice commemorative plaque recognizing your years. Get a picture? Can we, can we get a little picture of the presentation, please, to blast out on social media? Everything's about social media nowadays.
I don't write, get a market it.
Yeah.
Clock's ticking.
Could you actually stand in front of one of the poster boards? Let's get, get the TV out of there. Ready? Oh, that's actually nice with the flowers. Yeah, I'm trying to get the flowers and no TV, let's do this.
Great aesthetics.
For those at home watching, bear with us.
One of those will be good.
And then one by herself, one by herself.
Come on with Tony.
All right, now let's get
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome. Can I just say a few words?
Thank you, Julie.
Oh, you're welcome. I just want to say, it's been a privilege. I have loved working with all of you guys, and I think I am very lucky to be with such a good group of professionals that have really done a great job, and have all kind of listened to each other and heard each other's point of views, respectively, and respectfully. And I just am really proud to be part of this group of professionals. And I wish you all the luck going forward, and hope you'll find somebody that makes motions a little better than I do. But otherwise, it's been smooth sailing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Rob.
Ah, okay. Julie, thank you very much
You're welcome.
for the past six years, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you. Such a wonderful attitude, such caring for our school district. Absolutely love spending the week with you down in the Cape for the MASC meeting that one year. And, um, getting, you know, getting, getting to know you a little bit better down there was, it was a lot of fun. I appreciate that very much. As far as everything else, again, I'll reiterate, please get out and vote. Get to the town, get to town meeting next week. Please come and support this very important project for the future of our town, of our schools, and for our kids. And want to thank the members of this committee who have put in so many hours of work to help to try to make this a reality. Mr. Tinnarelli, Ms. Stanton, sorry. Ms., right, not Ms. Stanton, but, um, all of your work has gotten to this point, gotten us to this point, and we greatly appreciate that. I appreciate all the members from the building committee, from other, from other committees in town, all of their work, I appreciate the work from the, from Town Hall, and of course, all of the hard work from our administration. I, I have seen this before in another, in another district, and how much work is involved in getting this to come to completion. And I, so I know exactly how much has happened here, and thank you very much. So please, get out, come to the town meeting and help us make this happen. And that's it for tonight, for me.
Julie, I just wanted to say, I only got to work with you for a year, but it was fun. But I've known you for a lot longer than that, so I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Have a lot of fun, and I'm sure you can find other things to do on a Tuesday night. And yes, just again, please come out, support this beautiful building for this kids. They so richly deserve it, and so many people have worked so hard. You guys have done an amazing job over the last two years, and it's just so important for our town to have three solid, good educational facilities moving forward. Thank you, that's all I have.
Branco.
Julie, thank you for six great years. It's, it's a daunting task for community members to volunteer for any of these positions. And without great volunteers and people giving back to the community, we couldn't do what we do, so thank you for your time.
Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Julie, for all your time. We'll miss you sitting there across from us. I also want to congratulate Dr. Flanagan on his evaluation, thank him for his leadership. He'll, he'll mention his administrative team as, as being the ones doing the work, but trust me, he is at the forefront of our team, and I think he's the one that promotes the stability within our team. I certainly know that he's the reason I enjoy coming to work every day. We always have our interesting talks, and if anything comes across that I need to be straightened out on a subject matter, he always manages to do it, so thank you again for being there for the district, and look forward to continued successful work with them. Thank you.
I know. Julie, thank you, I've been here the whole six years with you.
On the policy committees and superintendent evaluation committees. I think we left out union contract negotiations.
Oh, yeah, that was my favorite.
So thank you for all the time. I don't think the average person knows how much time we actually spend doing this. It's a huge commitment, so I want to say thank you. Dr. Flanagan, again, congratulations on your review. You deserve it all. It's been a rough two years for everybody, but probably more so for you than us, because we, we took some of the heat once in a while, but you took it every day. So thank you for that. The school building committee, the time that Dr. Flanagan and his staff have spent on this is incredible. Behind the scenes, Dr. Branco as well, on the educational side of it. Just so much work has gone into this, so I hope everyone comes out, May 3rd, and vote. The board of selectmen voted last night, I don't know, did you get in touch on this?
I did, no, please.
But we'd like to thank the board of selectmen and the capital asset committee for approving the playground, fully funded through ARPA. So that was done last night, so we will have two new playgrounds at the elementary school, hopefully sometime next year, or later this year, I'm not quite sure of the building schedule, but Ms. Stanton is also on the ballot coming up here on May 17th. That's all I can say on that. I think that is it.
Sure.
I think so.
Ryan.
Julie, thank you, it's been a fun five years. You've always been a good sport about you making motions and how that goes. The one thing you always brought too was accountability. You always made sure you held people accountable, and it helped the committee as a whole. I know, you know, Mike now gives us more frequent updates on his goals, and that came from you asking questions. I think that's benefited the whole committee, I think it's benefited Mike too. You know, I know in my life, having to update goals, it sort of keeps you on track. So just bringing that accountability to the committee, I think has been a huge asset, and we're going to miss that. As far as May 3rd goes, every single vote will count. If you're kind of hedging on going or not, literally every vote will count. I'm fully anticipating, holding our cards up and counting to see if we get that two-thirds, so I don't care what you're doing, cancel it, and please come on the meeting. Thank you.
Julie, we're going to let you go last night.
Um, yeah, I kind of said everything I had to, to Julie, congratulations and thank you. May 3rd is, is critical. Please, we'll have NHS students and, and high school students available to watch kids. It, it's, to Ryan's point, yeah, it's critical, every vote's going to count, and there's been a lot of work that has gone into this process. And I think Dustine said it, our kids richly deserve this school, absolutely, our community deserves a school. You know, there's a saying that communities are judged by the schools that they keep. This is our opportunity, this is our opportunity to capitalize for our, our community and our kids, and everyone can benefit from this, so please come on, on May 3rd.
I just wanted to bring up another point about tonight. It was really refreshing to have a conversation about the curriculum and the changes to the curriculum and the improvements that we were trying to make. This is part of what we're here for, it was, it was just wonderful to have this conversation, so thank you for the update. I know that your slides were a lot, Dr. Branco, but, you know, we're happy to have those full slides back, so
After six rounds of cuts too.
Yeah. So thank you for that update, it was, it was just a refreshing conversation. It was, it was good to be focusing back on the education of our students. I'm also appreciative that we're really focusing on the social emotional needs of our students and getting, trying to get the right support in place for next year and for the future. And I'm appreciative that the administration can adapt as our student needs adapt. They're constantly changing, now more so than ever, so I appreciate that. Dr. Flanagan, congratulations on your review.
Thank you.
You've done an outstanding job. You know, any of the words that we can share are probably not enough to explain it. And to Ryan's point and Tony's point, you do so much behind the scenes that nobody will ever know. You're constantly on, we've all called you at ungodly times, and you pick up. So, you know, thank you for everything that you've done. As far as the middle school vote, I'll say the same thing that everybody has said, please come out and vote. We need every single vote to get this building to pass. We don't get more than one opportunity at this, this is our only shot. So May 3rd, which is next Tuesday, a week from today, right here at the high school, in the gymnasium at 7:00 p.m., please come, bring anybody in your house that can vote, that's a registered voter. We need all the support that we can get in order to pass this school on May 3rd. And Julie?
You get the final words? Okay, well, of course, I will be there May 3rd, no matter what, because I've seen how hard everyone on this committee has worked to pull this together, and I think it's such an important thing for our town, like they have already said, that it really, you know, will finish up our, our school district, it'll make it complete. And so I hope everybody, you know, does come out. And I just want to say that I've gotten to see the first six years of Dr. Flanagan as a superintendent from the beginning, when he first came in, it was Don Champa for maybe a month, I think, or two, but then, then Dr. Flanagan started. And I've seen an amazing amount of growth, and I've seen him, you know, transform into an amazing leader. And I just want to say that I really enjoyed that, and, you know, he, he started out strong, but it's ended even stronger, so, but I thank everybody, and I wish you all the best. I will definitely miss my Tuesday night, so have a good time.
Thank you.
With that, we do have a need for executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff, member, or individual. We'll return from executive session only to adjourn the regular session, the regularly session meeting. session meeting, this, I'll seek a motion, and it will recall, require a roll call vote.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Rob?
In favor?
In favor. I'm in favor.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
We are in executive session, thank you.